If we can turn this down just a little bit. Okay, let's pray. Lord, be with us in our meeting that your goodness and love and mercy would not just be among us, but would guide us into your future. Give us the guts to reach out in the way you're calling this church to go through Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. So first you see in the outline is a series of four statements, and then we're going to get to the issues to address last. First of all, timeline. Now, this timeline is not an absolute. This is a tentative projected timeline. Given my experience, this is my sixth interim job. So I am not, this is not my first rodeo, although you are a bigger bull than anything I've ridden before. Okay? Talk about that later. So every interim is a period of recognizing orientation, disorientation, and reorientation. Those are three terms come up from a Presbyterian theologian named Walter Brueggemann, who said that the entire Bible is written around orientation, disorientation, and reorientation. And every change that happens is around that. We are comfortable with a certain kind of life orientation. Something happens to upset that, disorientation, and now we've got to do something new to deal with it. Orientation, disorientation, reorientation. Okay, I don't think it's any surprise to you that this church was kind of cruising along with the 22-year pastor of Ross Purdy, and suddenly he disappeared. He went to La Cañada. And there's all sorts of stuff about feelings about that. That's part of the disorientation. It's the loss. It's the frustration. It's the anxiety. It's the fear. It's the wonderment. It's all that stuff. Life isn't what it used to be. And then you call a guy by the name of Eis Knogel to come and be an interim pastor, and you say, who is he? And what is he about? Disorientation. Here's reorientation. We're getting to know each other. We're going to learn some new patterns, some new ways of talking about the church, and a new sense of the future. We are getting reoriented to what God is calling First Presde Burbank to be in the next 20 years. Let me summarize it this way. The future will not look much like the past. That's very difficult, isn't it? Because we want to recreate the past. I've yet to see a church able to recreate the past. And so this will buck up against all of our instincts, which is, I wish things could be the way they used to be. They're not. And so part of my job is to name the reality of the way things are and what could be in our future. Now, I'm going to give you a chance to ask some questions when I'm done with this presentation so that we can have some interaction. We'll even give you a microphone if you take just a moment to ask a question. My job is to help build trust and relationships between us and between the new staff that's coming. By the way, we have some old staff that are still with us. We have a number of new staff people that are coming, and you just met one of them today. It's Cinnamon. She's not the last new staff person we're going to say hello to. Okay? There will be a need to reorganize the staff, new job descriptions, new ways of thinking about what kind of ministries we're doing. The staff will not look like the staff when Ross was here. By the way, I'm nothing negative towards Ross. This is not in any way a negative about Ross or about the church's past. This is simply saying, life is different. Okay? We are looking at, or I'm looking at right now, the places where there's a lot of fog or frustration. And that takes some time to figure out who is in the fog and who is in the frustration, and how do we help them to work it through. So let me say this as clear as I can. If you have frustrations or you have confusions, do not hesitate to email me or talk to me when you can get ahold of me here on Sunday morning or in the office. I am very willing to talk with you about anything that you have a question regarding. I want you to know everything you need to know. And sometimes you ask the questions that I haven't even asked yet. That's really good, because I need you to be able to ask the questions like today. One of my jobs here is to assess where we're at and where we should go. Now, I'm not here to dictate to you where we should go, but I am here to try to lead you to where I think it might be helpful to consider going. So understand the difference. I'm not here to tell you what to do. I'm here to try to help our elders and you understand what might be possible. There are moments where we need to have some healing and recovery here because some people are hurting. We've already, I've already had a number of conversations with people that are hurting or in pain about the transition. I'm sure I'm going to have some more of those. Transitions, changes are painful. It can cause deep grief. It can even cause anger in a sense of, I'm out of here. There's three great reactions to change. I'm going to be frozen. I'm going to flee. I'm going to get out of here, or I'm going to fight. Hell, no, I'm not going to accept this. I'm going to fight to change it. And those three reactions are typical to anybody who's in a transition. If you lose a spouse, if you lose a pastor, if you have to move someplace new, if you have a new job and you're losing an old job, these are all normal experiences. And by the way, in the middle of all that is what we learned in this reading. "They worshiped him and some doubted." And I've said this already, I'll say it a million times. If you don't have doubts, then you're not in touch with reality. I get nervous around people who say, I never doubt about anything. Oh, I don't. Please stay away from me. That's why Matthew ended it with the way he said, "They worshiped him and some doubted." Even the people who saw him in the resurrection, even the people who saw him ascend, they worshiped him and some doubted. That's how powerful positive doubt can be. Doubt is not sin. Doubt is the honest pursuit of the truth. And sometimes it takes a while. So if you have doubts about this, God bless you. All right? We are in a financially difficult place. I will spend more time about this. Our future is not financially solvent. Our present is not financially solvent. Unless one of you would like to write a check for a million dollars, and I'd be happy to accept it on behalf of our Lord and have us, that would stabilize our next three years. But I don't know anybody who's probably going to write the check for a million dollars. And so we have a big challenge about our finances here from the get-go. So the first six months, that is, the time I came, which was at the very end of March until September, this is what I'm going to be working on. Number two. For the next six months, we will be doing the preparation process to look for, what does it mean to do a pastoral search? That means I'll be working with you and the session particularly about what it means to vision the future. I'm going to give you a little hint of that today. We're going to look more deeply at the Burbank demographics around us. And the requirement of our Presbyterian is we do a mission study. And that is a plan that not only looks at the demographics, the abilities of the church to do ministry, but what are the specific things we want to accomplish? Now, here's an important thing to get right. The plan precedes the pastor. We don't wait for a new pastor to give us a new plan, because you know how long that would take? Three to five years. This church doesn't have three to five years. We need to do the plan now and call a pastor to the new plan. That means we have some work to do in the meantime. So we have ongoing process of settling staff stability and alignment. And in the meantime, we're going to do some significant evangelism experiments. What is the number one ministry need of this church in this neighborhood? Reach out. Reach out. Reach out to the real people here. Because this neighborhood doesn't look like who we are in this church, does it? That's why I'm giving you the demographics. The neighborhood actually looks much different than who we are in this church, which means we have to change to reach out to the neighborhood. And I don't know about you, but change makes me nervous, right? Because I really don't want to do that. I want things to be the way they used to be. Not going to happen. We need to find a way to balance the budget, and we'll talk more about that. One of the ways we're doing that is we're renting the facility. But another way we're doing it is I plan on rapping a couple of banks. Hope, you know, I'm kidding, of course. But I have considered buying a printing press and see if we just can't print the money. Okay? We need to find a way to balance the budget. Now, let me say this as clear as I can. We're at a point where saving money will not get us into the future. This is the rainy day that if we don't spend the money the right way, we don't have a future. So if you think, well, let's just save the money. There are thousands of Presbyterian churches in the United States that are dying because they're giving themselves to saving money to the last dollar until they go on hospice and die. That is not our way to the future. We're going to have to spend the money carefully and wisely and diligently and strategically if we want to have a future. Now, here's the thing that's hidden behind the scenes, and you may know about it, you may not know about it. There's a church about a mile away. It's called the Grandview Presbyterian Church. It's also in our Presbyterian. It's PCUSA denomination like us, and it is down to about 20 members. It's got its facility. And the question has come up several times between this church and that church, do we have a future together? And that question's got to continue to be asked. And I've already met with their session, and they said, yes, we do think we have a future together, but we aren't ready to talk. So here's my quick point, and I'll say it to them like I'm saying it to you. We have about two years to talk, and then it's too late. And I don't mean just talk, to have a serious partnership. And so we're running out of time, whether that could work or not. Yes? Grandview still has a preschool. It does have a preschool, and that's one of the reasons why it is self-existing. They base a lot of their existence on their preschool ministry. It's still under the session's influence and control. However, let me say this. I've never seen a church prosper into the future on the basis of a preschool.
No, I understand.
Right? Yes, there still are. But I'm not here to talk about Grandview. Let me just say, Grandview is on the radar. And there may be a go and it may not be a go in our conversations, but I'm just putting it out there. We don't have a solution. We don't have a plan. It's just there for a potential conversation. Now, if Grandview is in play, here's the extra piece to this trajectory. If Grandview is in play, it's going to take an extra year to do the interim. If Grandview is not in play, then we have one less year. So I want to let you know that. So the interim period will probably take two years. But if Grandview is in play for a serious conversation or a partnership, it will be three years. And we won't know yet. All right? You can ask questions in a minute. So the last section. From April of 2024 to June of 2025, we elect a pastor nominating committee. They do a search for a new pastor. We have a year or more of functional stability, which means we've gotten through all of the grief and the pain and the transition. We have stabilized a new ministry form and a plan, and we then call a pastor to that functional stability. We have regular outreach events and sustained patterns of outreach to the neighborhood. And hopefully, we are experiencing growth as a church. I do not want to leave here until we are experiencing growth as a congregation. I was not brought here to bury this church. I am not a hospice specialist. I am a person who says, let's get on with life. God has a future. Let's find out what that is, and let's participate with everything we've got to make it happen. All right? So if you're looking for somebody to hold your hand while you're dying, I can do that, but that's not my expertise. Okay? Then we will be ready for a new pastor. So let me say this again. We're going to call the new pastor to a new vision for the church's future because we need the new pastor to lead us into that new place, not to recreate an old place. And hopefully, we have a new pastor present. If Grandview is not in view by 2025, if Grandview is in view, then by 2026. And my final point is, God help us. Because we are really in a very challenging place. But I'm optimistic. I'm really optimistic about this congregation. I've been here long enough to know that most of you are pretty fearless when it comes to taking on stuff. You may have some doubts or some concerns, but you're willing to go there. Some of us may not be ready yet. We'll work on you. Okay? Now, I want to take on the big issues just for a moment. There's a list of 10 here. I've already mentioned finances are our biggest one immediately. We've got to figure out a way to balance the budget. Right now, we have a budget that is about $150,000 short of balance. We are going to borrow $150,000 from ourselves to make this year ministry budget work. And if you say, well, let's cut the budget, then I'm going to say to you, and this is my broken record, then cut your future. Because churches don't grow without the right staff, the right leadership to help them to grow. It's not a magical, automatic thing. Churches don't grow just because you call a new pastor. In fact, what happens oftentimes, the new pastor gets crushed under the load of having to make changes happen that should have happened when the interim was here. So my primary job is to bring about the change so the next pastor can lead the new church. And if I don't, it'll crush the next pastor. You can tell I'm shy about saying things the way I believe. We are looking at a staff redevelopment process. And specifically, we are looking at the role of Casey Way. And that is, Casey has been a parish associate of this church for years. How many years? Seven years. Did you know he was a parish associate? He's not an official pastor of this church? He's called Pastor Casey or Pastor Way, isn't he? We need to work to settle his current status and his future status. We have some more conversations about that. By the way, I'm not going to say any of this behind his back. He's here. I'm going to talk about him while he's with us. So number four. We need to spend some time with Grandview Presde. More about that later. We need to change now and not wait till a new pastor comes. We need to develop a new vision and plan for evangelism in this neighborhood. We need to establish a sense of calm and hope and joy, then call a new pastor to our calm and hope and joy. Now, part of the calling of a new pastor means, and this is also part of the situation with Casey, as you know, housing's expensive in this area. And I'm going to look at the demographics in just a moment. The typical pastor who will come to this church does not have enough down payment to pay for a house. That was true at La Cañada. It's true for every church that exists in Southern California. And so the church typically needs to have a stash of money to help another pastor or its pastors to buy homes. Casey's still living in an apartment. This is a big question for the church's future in calling anybody to pastoral responsibility here. What about the cost of homes? I don't have a solution, but I know it's an issue. We need and are working on maximizing the rental space of this church, but here's the delicate balance. We don't want to rent space that we're going to need for ministry outreach. And so we could rent the entire facility and have no space to do ministry. That's not helpful. And so we have to find a balance between rentals and making some income on rentals and having enough space and energy to be able to do outreach to the community. And finally, this church does not have a future without serious evangelism success. I'm not talking about going door-to-door and knocking on all the doors in the neighborhood, although if you want to do that, I'd be happy to support you to do that. But I'm talking about plans to bring the neighborhood to us and for us to go out into the neighborhood. And with that in mind, I want to take a quick look at the demographics. So take the demographic, and then we'll have time to ask questions. What Carolyn Jackson has given for us is a rendition of where the church is. That's the center of the circle and the surrounding neighborhood. Now, we know that our surrounding neighborhood is a lot of mountains, right? There's not a lot of evangelism we can do there up in those hills. And so the evangelism is where the people really live, in proximity to the church. And within a mile radius of this church, there's about 150,000 people. Just within a mile radius of the church. 150,000 people. Okay. Now, I just do a quick look at some of the demographics, and I'm not going to do this in detail, but go to page two. The population, I misquoted it. Within three miles is 150,000. Within one mile is 35,000 people. So one of our objectives is to find 100 people within a mile radius among the 35,000 who can hear the gospel the way First Presbyterian church Burbank can articulate it. That would be one of our goals. Then, in terms of income, you'll notice, we don't live in a wealthy community. Within one mile, the median household income is 67,000. Within three miles, you'll notice the median income goes up to 81,000. So guess what? We are in the poorer part of Burbank, though wealthier parts of Burbank are further away from us. Now, here's my experience of the Presbyterian church and poverty. We like to feed the homeless, but we don't like to invite the low-income people. And that's because it makes us a little nervous. I mean, after all, we're kind of a middle-class, upper-middle-class historical church. So part of the challenge is, how do we reach out to people who just don't have a lot of money or a lot of education? There are some, but there are not many. And so if you notice, in terms of the demographics of households, 65% of the people that are around us within one mile, 65% make less than 75,000 a year. I would almost declare there are very few people in this room that are making less than 75,000 dollars a year in a household. That says something about who's around us. We're comfortable with the 45% of people who make over 75,000 dollars a year. We need to learn to reach out to people with less income. The second part of age, you'll notice that there's a lot of younger people around us. 75% of the population around us within one mile, 75% is under 60. This is a congregation of mostly over 60. That's a big challenge in itself. How does an over-60 congregation make peace with reaching out to an under-60 congregation? That's one of our challenges. Yes?
I always thought we're not looking at what's going on today. We only offer a service on Sunday. A lot of people work on Sundays.
Yes, right. I'll repeat what she says. Yes? Yes. So let me repeat what you're saying because I need to put it on video. She's saying that a lot of people can't come to church on Sunday because they work on Sunday. And therefore, we've got to offer things for connections to people who are working on Sundays. That's one of the issues, one of the challenges. Thank you. All right. It's a concern. All right, it's one of the concerns. There are ways to do that. Okay, let's go to page number three. In terms of race and ethnicity, and I want to be careful on this, but I want us to be realistic. It says that 65% of our neighborhood is white. However, let me throw a condition on that in terms of what I hear and understand because of my experience. Half of the white population are Armenian. How many of you have an Armenian background? One, two? You married one? God help you. Three, four? Okay. We have about 5% of those gathered here that have an Armenian connection or background or heritage. 35% or 40% of this neighborhood is Armenian. We probably need to be a church that's much more friendly to the Armenian culture people. 50% of Burbank High is Armenian children. So here's, that's, we're all white people, right? According to the census, but we're very different in terms of our background. And so that's a big challenge for us. So, and then you have people from all sorts of other racial, ethnic groups. You'll see that 45% of this environment is from another racial, ethnic history, heritage. So if you aren't Armenian, there are a bunch of other people from other racial makeups and backgrounds, culture, who make up another 45%. So this neighborhood's about 30% Anglo-white. We are a church of about, I'm going to take a shot, 90% Anglo-white. We have a big job to become a cross-cultural, multi-racial, multi-ethnic congregation and figure out how to do that. By the way, it's one of the hardest things to do because most people in the United States don't want to be with people that are different than them. They want to be with people who are like them. And this church needs to start learning how to be with people that are different than us. By the way, I'm a big white guy saying this. So I have to change too. I've got to wake up and smell the roses, or it may be, what's the rose of Armenia? Not the rose, but the flower of Armenia? I should know that, but I don't. Anyway, somebody who knows that can tell me. Okay? We need to start smelling those flowers too. Okay. You'll notice employment. Actually, education is where I want to go. I don't want to go to employment. You'll notice that actually this is a fairly educated neighborhood. Most people have some college or associate degree or bachelor's degree or graduate degree. And so that's good news for us because we actually do better with college-educated people. That's our history of being Presbyterian. So there's some good news in all that. Okay, I'm going to go to page four. Let's look at the family households. In this community around us, 15,000 households, or 14,500. And 58% are family households, and of those, there are 41% that actually have a couple. By the way, that's couple as in, there are many ways to look at a couple these days. They could be married, not married. It could be gay, it could be straight. There are a lot of couples here, but they aren't typical couples to the history of what we may be experiencing in life. So the other thing we want to see is that in terms of housing units, 72% of the people around us within a mile rent, rent their homes. 72%. What does that tell you about their economic wealth? They don't have a lot of economic wealth. They must rent. That's the reality of the people around us. Okay, I'm not going to spend any more time on this. I just want to give you a hint of the demographic challenges that we have. And I want to see if you have questions.